Okay, then. Well, officially, Happy New Year, everybody, and welcome to our January 2022 Planning Commission meeting here in Lake Forest Park. I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. Like I said, we'll pause when Ira gets back over and try to help him troubleshoot. But I'd like to welcome you to this meeting and tell you upfront that it may be short, so you don't want to, so you're gonna want to pay close attention because we might not be going the whole two hours. Let's get going with the land acknowledgement. Is there anybody who wants to read that?
You can do it.
Okay, Melissa, thank you.
We'd like to acknowledge we are on the traditional land of a rich and diverse group of native peoples who have called this area home for more than 10,000 years. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the descendants of these native peoples who are still here today. In doing this, we aim to illuminate the longer history of this land we call home, our relationship to this history, and the heritage of those peoples whose ancestors lived here before the European-American immigration that began in the 1800s.
Thanks, Melissa. Would somebody move our agenda onto the table, please?
I move that we accept the agenda for Tuesday, January the 11th, 2022.
Excellent. Thanks a bunch, TJ. Is there any discussion about our agenda? Questions?
I have one question. Do we have anything on the sign code?
No, that's we're just gonna get a status report on that. Okay. Like I said, it might be a really short meeting. All right. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor of the agenda as published, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. Okay, we have an agenda. All right, next is the meeting minutes from December 14th. Did everyone have a chance to review those? Oh, sorry, I'm not looking at your faces. Yes, no? Okay, very good. Would somebody bring it to the table for discussion? Bring those minutes.
I move that we accept the minutes from the December 14th, 2021 meeting.
Great, thank you. A second on that? Was that Melissa? Okay, great, thank you. All right, any discussion on these minutes, any corrections or? Anything?
I have a couple of questions if you all don't mind. Only because I wasn't in attendance at the last meeting.
Sure.
And they couldn't quite yet find the recording, so. So page number two, line number 47, it talks about missing middle. How do we, how are we defining the missing middle? That's my first question.
I'm sorry, what line was that?
Line number 47, I think it is, on page two.
Here we go.
Yeah. I just want to make sure I'm understanding what we're talking about when we define missing middle.
I think, Steve, if I'm not mistaken, you were pulling that from our comp plan. It was a term that's been used in several city documents. Do you know if it's been quantified anywhere?
No, I don't think there's an official definition. It's really, it isn't addressed in our current comp plan. It's just the, the idea that there, there's a lot between single-family housing and, you know, higher density, typical multifamily apartment buildings. And so that's what we're trying to, when we address, when we talk about addressing the missing middle is everything duplexes, accessory dwelling units, and, you know, townhouses, those kind of things, getting more of those housing options.
Okay. Good, that's, that's clear. Thank you. And then.
Yeah, we didn't hear you.
Oh, I said, so on page number two as well, line number 50, responded that he understood the council wanted to look at tree regulations. What was the final decision on tree regulations, the conversation around that?
David, there's something that's happening with your mic, but it's only for a minute, and it just happens to be the minute that you made the reference to.
Okay.
The line.
I think I heard his question. He was asking what was the final decision, that, that, that line mentions the tree regulation, the council wants to look at tree regulations. And so as far as I know, there's nothing new, David, regarding, as far as I know, the, after the council finishes their review of the, ADU update you recommended, then they, they hope to move on to the recommended changes from the tree board, which were delivered to them about a year ago.
Over a year ago. Okay, but the planning commission hasn't made any decision whether or not to include that on the next work plan or whatever the case might be.
Now, I, that's certainly something we can talk about at, you know, when we get to that part of the agenda, but.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I just wanted to confirm that I'm understanding.
You didn't miss anything, right?
Okay.
Okay. Was, was, was there anything else, David?
There is one other question.
In the, while you come up with that really quick, Steve, Councilmember Bodie did not receive a link to be a panelist. Could you upgrade her from the attendee list, please?
Sure.
Okay, and then go ahead, David.
Okay, this is just, I'm just curious what, what this means. So page number, I think it's 17, the statement is, City Attorney Pratt responded that size can be regulated, and that generally, if you enforce your regulation without reading the sign, then it probably can be defended. So that last statement, what does that mean? If you can enforce your regulation without reading the sign, then it probably can be defended.
That was what City Attorney Pratt was saying was a good, you know, it's been a rule of thumb, if your regulation requires you to know what the sign says, like, this sign, you know, there should be no signs advertising for whatever cab companies. If, if, if that, if that's your regulation says something like that, then it's, 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 it's going afoul of the free speech requirement, because you can't, you can regulate size, you can regulate those kind of things, but you can't regulate what the sign says.
Got it. Okay, very clear. Thank you. That's all for me.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, line 46 on page four. It says Commissioner Lee asked Commissioner Sanders about his experience with the last comp plan update. Actually, I was asking if Steve, if we could, if there were, there were directions, I can't remember exactly what the discussion was, but about topics, directing topics that the commission can focus on for the comp plan.
Okay, you want to suggest some, some wording? Where were you again? Page five or page four?
Or page four, line 46. And I think that there was some discussion about the comp plan and that there were some changes coming afoot in order to direct kind of, because it was such a big subject, you know, maybe if we can, the changes that were coming down the pipeline, that's how I remembered it, though. Yeah.
Okay, about, how about just that, about the changes that were coming down the pipeline?
Perfect. Yeah, and I think it was just kind of left. I wasn't sure, because we were trying to decide, you know, it was such a big subject and, you know, I think we were just trying to kind of wrap our brains around it. And I think, wasn't there some mention, though, about, you know, the, you were aware of some of the changes that the council was going to make and possibly helping direct our energies this, this upcoming year?
That's, yeah, I mean, I guess I took away from that conversation, what I took away was, you know, laying out sort of the, the major themes for the comp plan update as I understood them. So I think in discussion of our work plan, you kind of see, you know, what those themes are. And in addition to whatever needs to be done to, as, as I always interpret, coming down the pipeline is new GMA regulations, that kind of thing, that we need to be aware of. So, so yeah, more to come on that.
Well, okay. Yeah, that was just my understanding. Yeah, just clarification on that.
Okay, any other comments about our minutes?
Yeah, I just want to say again that I really like the minutes and find them very helpful, and I love the fact that they're detailed enough that David can ask clarifying questions about them. So, thank you, guys.
Well done, Nick. Thank you for that, TJ. Okay, well, if there's no other discussion, and I guess Commissioner Sander or Richard, do you want to adjust your, can, how is Robert's rules? He can make a friendly, he can accept the friendly amendment, right, that Lois made? Or does he have to make a new motion?
Just say, Richard, do you, if you, you can just say you accept that amendment and approve as amended. Change your motion to approve as amended.
Yeah, so I, I move that we approve the minutes as amended.
Okay, great. Do we need another second or does that first one?
Second, if we need it.
Okay, there we go, TJ. All right, all of those in favor of approving our December 14 minutes as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Nick, we're set. Okay, the next meeting date is February 8th. I also want to acknowledge that I do believe it will be Richard's last meeting with us before his term ends. So we'll be thinking about all the tender words you'd like to share with him of gratitude and, and I will be.
Or not.
Yeah. I'll get some baking going. And also, I just want to encourage all of you, if you know any friends or neighbors in Lake Forest Park that you think would be a good addition to our group, I would love to have you either reach out to me or Steve and encourage, encourage them to apply. We will have an empty seat. And I did want to acknowledge too that Walter and Gemma are in attendance tonight, and hopefully council will be approving them soon, and they can officially join us hopefully next month. Okay, citizens' comments, is there anybody in attendance at our meeting tonight that would like to make a comment? If you do, just a reminder, there's a little raise hand feature at the bottom of the panelist window. And we have Randy.
Go ahead, Randy.
It looks like you're muted, Randy.
Hi, well, I've had audio challenges all day, so I apologize if I, if they continued during my brief comment, but on behalf of the Lake Forest Park Stewardship Foundation Board, I wanted to wish you all a Happy New Year. And just take a minute to acknowledge the body of work that all of you have accomplished the last few years. I mean, these are no small jobs, the tackling of the town center code, the garage, and then most recently, the ADU legislation that you studied that we hope will be adopted in terms of legislation very soon by the council. Those are no small feats of accomplishment, so it just, it needs to be underscored that the body that you are all members of serve an essential role in our city, and by engaging the public and studying those issues that will truly shape the future of our city, we thank all of you and look forward to following your work during 2022. So our organization's focus has always been on preserving and enhancing the quality of life for all of us. We welcome change, acknowledge that it's going to happen, but our focus is on ensuring that it's done responsibly and thoughtfully, and that we stay true to our environmental stewardship, preserving the open spaces and enhancing our parks. So we want to partner, continue to partner with the city on, on issues of mutual concern. A couple of things that are primary initiatives for us right now are first adopting best practices for the use of pesticides in our city. We need strong policies and practices to prevent the overuse, incorrect use, and unnecessary use of these chemicals. And then second, we're concerned about the use of RUEs for development in and around environmentally sensitive areas. It's critical that the standards and review processes for these applications effectively address potential injury to residents and wildlife like salmon populations that we've been working so hard to restore. So we are going to be looking for a framework that minimizes the harm to our natural environment and adequately mitigates unavoidable impacts. So we did submit letters outlining our concerns to the council and to the administration, hope that you received copies of these as well. We plan to recommend to the council that you adopt these, that the council rather asks you to adopt these two issues as areas of study for the year, and we will do whatever we can to support you in, in this, in this arena as we move forward in Lake Forest Park. Thank you so much, and we look forward to working together.
Thank you so much, Randy.
You bet.
Does anybody else have anything they would like to say or comment on? Wait just a minute, see if another hand goes up. Okay, well, seeing none, I'll just remind everybody who's attending our meeting tonight that we'll have an opportunity right at the end to make comment if you have missed this window. That takes us into our next agenda item, which is a report from our esteemed colleague, Councilmember Bodie.
Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. It's a pleasure to see all of you again, one year older, having survived the snow and still being in the middle of the monsoon here as we are. I do appreciate the fact that the road doesn't flood when we have heavy rains anymore. So for those of us who have been around for a while, you know, Bothell Way used to flood whenever we had heavy rains from the overflow of the, of the stream. So anyway, glad to be here. As you know, we have three new council members, so we have our first 2022 council meeting this week on Thursday, both a working session and a council meeting, so that will be their inaugural opportunities as council members. So we're looking forward to having them as colleagues and working through the issues going forward. We probably will have a retreat sometime in the next three months or so to start thinking about what the council's agenda with our new membership is. We probably will also look at the reelection of chair, vice chair, budget committee chair, and so forth. So all of those decisions will be made shortly. The decision on the two new planning commission members and welcome Jim and Walter, Walter, is it right? Yes. And we will make a decision at the council meeting on, on Thursday, so that will be resolved relatively soon. In addition, the mayor is looking at a suite of candidates for the Climate Action Committee, the new committee that we will have going, looking ahead. There's no question that that committee at some point will be intersecting and interacting with the planning commission and the tree board, because I imagine that there'll be issues of common concern. So don't know exactly how that's going to work or the timing of when that's going to occur, but it's something that probably will come up at some point during 2022. There is state legislation that's already percolating around on the ADU issue. There are all different versions of it right now, as far as I understand, and some of them are more expansive and allow quadruple buildings on any single-family lot. No owner occupancy requirement, no parking requirement anywhere, not just close to transit locations. I think the governor has a version, Representative Palet has a version, so I think it's going to be a while before it percolates out. The, I think the, some previous versions of the legislation had a grandfathering provision if a jurisdiction adopted an ADU ordinance ahead of the passage of the legislation, it would be given, you know, a certain amount of time of application so that the new legislative state legislation wouldn't really affect it for some grace period of time, like five years or something like that. And so that's a possibility. It's, it's very much in flux. But I do think the council is committed to acting on the ADU ordinance and the proposed amendments that you all recommend it very soon as an early order of business. On the issue of herbicides that we heard a public comment on, I wanted to mention that the King Conservation District, well, first of all, I wanted to mention that the council and, and administration has received the comments of the Stewardship Foundation, very thoughtful, very detailed comments on herbicide application near streams in Lake Forest Park. And so an initial step that's being taken right now is that the King Conservation District is going to make a presentation at a, either a council work session or a council meeting in early February to explain their policies and the basis for their policies. So that, I think, should help us figure out and help the council figure out what the next steps are. So we have not been able to have that discussion because we've been, not been meeting for a while, and because we still need to discuss and consider what we hear from the King Conservation District first, and, and what we have heard from the Stewardship Foundation, and then figure out next steps. And then last but not least, you may or may not have heard that with the redistricting, we are now in a new legislative district. We are now, we are go, well, we're not right now, but starting in January 2023, we will be in the first congressional district, not the 46th legislative district. And so we will be, instead of connected to Seattle, we will be connected to Kenmore, Bothell, and, and Woodinville. So stay tuned, many changes coming up this year, and appreciate the fact that while you've developed your work plan, I'm sure there'll be some additional requests and, and, and conversations and coordination going on as we get further into 2022. Oh, and we, while we are in the process of putting in equipment to allow in-person and virtual participation in the same meetings, and we're moving ahead with that, which luckily we're able to do with pandemic-related federal funding. The, the fact is that because of the upsurge in COVID cases, we aren't going to be moving to anything beyond Zoom meetings anytime soon. You probably suspected that, but that's, that's just not in the cards for, for upcoming times. We do have, we do have some incidents of COVID or COVID connection among our, our city team. So, you know, there's probably not any organization that's been completely untouched by the COVID upsurge these days, and we're no exception. Any questions?
Melissa?
Yeah, I just, I had a quick question. When was about the, the zoning changes? I actually saw the plan that Inslee was putting together, and it looked like there was some provision that would any population under like 25,000 would not, would not fall under the, the new zoning plan. Have you heard anything about that? That's the only one I saw, and it was only like a brief blurb about it.
No, I heard, I heard the same thing, that Inslee was developing his own plan, which I thought was interesting. And I, I heard that it would allow duplexes, but not necessarily, you know, quadruplexes, which is what some of the proposals were including. And I had heard there were some limitations on that he was imposing as well, but I hadn't heard that there was a population limitation like that. I think, you know, we do have lobbyists who work for us in the state legislature, and so we haven't had a chance to get all those documents yet. Steve, have you, have you had a chance to see that? Can you answer this question better than I can?
I did take a quick look at the one that has the duplex requirement, and it, it, I was curious about that, too, because I saw different populations mentioned. And closer reading, it looks like for cities 20,000 and smaller, I think it was, that, that, it would just, they would just, it would just require duplexes allowed in single-family zones. For larger cities, there were, there were, you know, it's a broader spectrum of land uses.
Thank you. So, good question. I think we'll be learning more and hearing more, and I'll be reporting back to you what we, what we hear and what information we receive, and, and actually we can try to share some of those documents, though, honestly, till we see what's going to move forward, and the, the number of proposals gets narrowed. I don't think we know which ones are, are gonna move. It is a short session, so things have to move fast. And so be interesting to see what survives. I do think it was interesting that the governor developed a proposal, Inslee's office developed a proposal, because I don't think that was true last time around.
TJ, thanks, Councilmember Bodie.
Yeah. Yeah, I was just gonna ask, you mentioned kind of hybrid, you know, in-person remote technology, and are you gonna put, or is the city gonna put wireless in that we can use if we attend in person?
You know, I had a demonstration of the system, and I can't really answer that question. I, you know, I've seen, I don't know exact, I don't know the answer to that, and Steve, do you know the answer?
Go ahead, TJ, what we're gonna.
Oh, I just want to make this, I mean, I hope can raise it up to be a priority for that, because I won't attend any in-person meetings that don't have access that I can have on my computer. Now that I've gone remote and able to look things up, there's, I'm, I'm not going back. I guess is what I'm saying. I mean, I think it's hugely important in this technological world that we have that access during a meeting.
Yeah, I think we have, I, I will take that question back, and, and because that's probably a broader question, we have, we'd have to probably do something to make sure we have, you know, cyber, all our cybersecurity concerns covered, because it would be kind of a publicly accessible link, right, to, to use. So anyway, that will be, I'm sure we can figure it out, and I'm sure there's an answer to the question. I just don't know what it is.
Sorry, either, right now.
Thank, thank you for taking that back, Councilmember Bodie.
I'll try to report back on that at your next meeting or send an email out.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else have follow-up questions? Richard?
Yeah, Councilmember Bodie, I was just wondering if there's any update on any sound transit activities?
Yes, there actually is, and I'm sorry, I neglected to mention that. Sound transit is moving ahead with the planning and the final designs for the, for the bus rapid transit. And that, that includes having to come in to Steve and his team with their applications for the various approvals that they need from the city. You may recall that we have a partnering, we had previously a partnering agreement with them where they really tried to box us into short timeframes and so forth that we, we actually did not agree to. The, the plans as they stand right now are for sidewalks on the. Sidewalks on the lakeside of the, uh, of Bothell Way, but not on the other side. There will be retaining walls, um, because they will be taking. Space from people's yards on the uphill side, uh, to, uh, to allow the expansion of the road. So that there's a dedicated bus line and there would be three, uh, fairly large, um, bus stops. That would be at, um, Town Center, one sixty-fifth and one fifty-third. They'll be large enough to accommodate two buses. Um, they also will have to address our tree mitigation requirements. Um, and so how that is actually gonna work out, I'm not exactly sure. I do want to personally make sure that the retaining wall is not awful. Looking because it's gonna going to be at the gateway to our city. Um, and that, uh, you know, we, we pay attention to that and also to. The location where whatever tree mitigation is going to occur. Um, I'm sure the negotiations will be difficult, given our past experience with. Uh, negotiating agreements with Sound Transit and, and also being in litigation with them. So I think it, it, it at least, um. You know, is, is more straightforward, less controversial than their issues with the parking garage. But I still think there's going to be quite a bit of, um, back and forth. And, um. Uh, one thing that I realized the other day on this same issue is that. Based on my assessed house value, I give in my property taxes, Lake Forest Park, um. Seven hundred dollars a year for city services, that's all. But I realized based on the fact that we have two cars in my household and we pay car tabs. That we give six hundred dollars a year to Sound Transit. So. It's, uh, it's an interesting, I, I just was interested, uh, to see that I, uh, my, you know, I. I personally pay, uh, almost as much to Sound Transit as I do to, uh, our city for. Basic public services. Anyway, interesting. And, uh, stay tuned, uh, for, uh, more information on that, uh, cause it, it does sound like they're gonna move ahead.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, any follow-up questions? Any other questions? Okay, I just had, uh, two. Um, one was just general comp plan status. I. I know that loosely, uh, part of our work plan will, uh. Will and is anticipating, uh, starting work on that. So I'd love to know. Uh, what your status is on that. And then also, um, any direction on, um. The comment we received tonight about, uh, us potentially looking at the administration of reasonable use exception. Permits and looking for any opportunities to. Do that. Is that something that the councils had a chance to discuss that we, we should put into our work plan?
No, the council hasn't had a chance to discuss it. I think because the Planning Commission. It's an interactive relationship between the council and the Planning Commission. If you choose to put it in your work plan as, uh, an item that you want. Uh, to put in and that you want the council to concur in. That's something that I certainly I'll take it back, um, as a topic for discussion along with the herbicide. Uh, issue, but, um, I also think because the Planning Commission. Has its own independent authority, uh, under state law. If you wanted to include it. Uh, provisionally subject to talking to the council about it, that would be fine too. Either way you want it to go. I'm happy to, um, report it, you know, back and forth as your liaison.
Great, thank you. I, I do think that we also heard at our last meeting, a request for this. So that makes. Two that have come up and, um, and, and it may just warrant some consideration.
Yes, I would say we would want to hear from our city attorney about the sideboards that we operate within. Um, so it may be that that is not a large topic, um, but. A narrow topic, uh, and that, but that we could make, look at. And I, I don't know one way or the other, but that we could look at improvements within the, those, uh, legally mandated sideboards. Kind of like signs, um, so that we make sure we don't get crosswise and, and, uh, make ourselves vulnerable to litigation. So, uh, I think that, um. Uh, but, but my sense is it, it would be, it would be in the, in the details. And it, it wouldn't be, uh, you know, like a three-month project if that was taken on by the Planning Commission.
Okay, and then comp plan?
Comp plan, um, we've not had any lengthy discussions about it, except the presentations we've heard from our planning director Bennett. Uh, so, uh, overall, I think we're on the schedule that, um, that we're mandated to do. And we're aware that the Planning Commission is going to be preparing for this. Overall, I think we've been, we have the impression as a council, uh. And I can't speak for our new members, of course, who don't have probably an impression on this. Um, that, that there aren't going to be the necessity of huge changes. Um, that we're, we have a good enough comp plan right now and, and light of, and, and that the new guidelines. Um, that are coming our way are, are not going to require major changes. I think most fundamentally. Uh, we're aware as Director Bennett has told us and you. That on the growth targets, we're well-covered by the growth capacity. That we have available, um, through our zoning along, um, Bothell Way, Ballenger and that Town Center. As well as, as well as the buildable properties still available, uh, within, within our jurisdiction.
Great, thank you.
Anything to add, Steve?
Uh, no, I think, I think you covered it and we'll, we'll get into it more when we talk about the work plan. Um, that might be another opportunity for you to, uh, chime in as well, Councilmember Bodie.
Thank you very much.
And then my, my final question was, did you, when you were talking about the Climate Action Group, did you? Uh, mention what, who will make up membership of that group?
There will be, I think, seven or eight members and they're still being considered. By the mayor, uh, so I, you, I think we'll hear relatively soon. Um, who is being proposed and they'll come forward to the council. I don't know which council meeting that is, but it's, it's actively in process.
Will there be a liaison from our group or from your, or from your group or from both, um, on that group?
Uh, I assume we'll have a council liaison, but still to be determined. And, uh, certainly. I think the question of how to coordinate when there are points of intersection. Between the various citizen committees is still up in the air right now. I don't think we've. Had a chance to figure out how that would, how that would work exactly. But, uh. You know, it's possible we could have joint sessions or, uh, a small group from each group could meet together. Or I, I don't know exactly, you know, I don't know what the opportunities are. I think they'll be. It, it will be a while when they get up and running before there are substantive issues to. Uh, to coordinate on, but certainly if there's anything involving land use issues, uh, zoning changes, things like that. Uh, that the Planning Commission would be, um. Uh, coordinating and, and to, within the, the scope of the Planning Commission, you would, you would have leadership. So I, I think, um, that, that's, um. And, and I would imagine the same for the tree board. If there's something involving. Tree canopy or tree regulations that the Climate Action Group wants to recommend. It would then go before going to, um, the council as a recommendation. It would, it would go through the tree board for their. For their vetting, because that's their primary leadership role. So that's my personal take on, on what I expect. There could actually be an overlap with the, um, with the work of the Parks Board, but I don't see that clearly right now.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you all and Happy New Year once again. Glad you're all here.
Okay, uh, moving down in our, uh, into old business, um, uh, Steve and I talked last week about the sign code. And, um, uh, he let me know that, uh, Kim has been working to. Uh, move through the current code to figure out the areas that aren't currently in legal compliance. And will ultimately, uh, flag those and, uh, suggest some language that we could use. That would, uh, bring them into compliance. But the other piece that Steve and I, uh, talked about is whether or not. We felt that we ought to, um. Make other changes or consider other changes to our signage code. And I think, uh, Steve, you can correct me if I'm wrong. But one of the things we acknowledged in our discussion is we weren't being asked to do this by anyone in the community. Nor did we really know of any parts that were broken or problematic and the council also wasn't asking us. So. Given the other things we've talked about that, I think that our body feels concerned with and gearing up for the comp plan and. Potentially a housing study and so forth, um. I kind of sensed that our, our work on the sign code from my perspective, and I'd like to get your input. Um, would rest in simply bringing the signage code into legal compliance and, and nothing more. That's, Steve, did I capture our conversation?
Um, that, that certainly would be the main, main focus. And so I think, um, uh, City Attorney Pratt would be able to. Provide that analysis at the February meeting. Um, and, um. And then you could, um, you know, I, I, the, I've, I've used the, um. The, um, work plan to sort of tease out some of the issues you might be interested in, in looking at, that there was some discussion about. Last time that are pretty, pretty minor issues that we could be fixed as well. So, um. Yeah, the, I, I think, uh, it can be the main thing on the agenda in, uh, February and. Maybe by March, you've got a full draft of recommended changes that you could recommend, um, you know, that month or maybe in April.
Okay. Um, I'm just pulling up that work plan. All right, so, uh, I, there's really nothing more to discuss here, but. Um, just at, at, at first blush is, is, uh, are each of you comfortable with us? Planning our February meeting with the idea of, uh, looking at the items that. Um, Kim flags for legal compliance and then these items that, that Steve has noted that we might wanna consider or. Do any of you get the sense that, uh, there's broader work that we should be doing? On the signage code?
Go ahead, Richard.
Oh, thanks, TJ. Um, I just bring up, um, Maddie, that there, there has been. Kind of a longstanding issue of just, uh, at the town center of the, um, internal, uh. Businesses not being able to have, you know, uh, signage outside. Um, and I know there is a temporary, um. Uh. Policy or whatever that enables that, but that would seem like the one thing that I know of that should be addressed.
Okay.
I guess, Maddie, my question is, is have we, if we're going to be redoing the sign code, have we reached out to? Property owners of businesses to get input for. What they might like to see changed? Like, I mean, I'm, you know, very much on board with Richard's comment. That's the one I'm aware of at the Town Center. But otherwise, I mean, I just haven't. Heard anything else, but I feel like if we're going to redo the signage code, we should. Make sure we've reached out to the people most affected.
A hundred percent, and that's the reason for this question to you is that if we feel that we should be making updates beyond legal compliance. And a few housekeeping items, it does, I would say, warrant us. You know, planning work to gather information unless Steve or, um, our city manager. You know, are directly receiving requests from businesses. I don't think that we have nearly enough information here to. To understand what is currently problematic in our current code for Town Center businesses. Um, I do notice that Steve has put home occupation on, um, on the agenda. I, I, I'm not aware of any letters to our body. That, you know, where people are asking for us to reconsider this. And so certainly we could proactively go out and say, hey, we were just wondering. You know, who all feels, uh, uh, it feels like a really bad next door post. So, who wants to talk about home occupation signage? Um, so, anyway, uh. This is the, the, the heart of the question is, is we have work that we would need to do and processes I think we should follow. If we did want to, um, work on updates to other areas of the signage code. Besides these, um, essential parts that, that Kim will be flagging. And, and therefore it's probably, you know, multiple touches. I mean, we would need to do the work to gather the information. Look at the information, much like we did with ADUs, extract findings and then use those findings to, um. Make recommendations and, you know, open that up to the public. Uh, so you can see my dilemma. If, if we wanna take that route, that I'm looking at, you know, the remainder of the spring likely. Tackling, you know, these process pieces. Versus looking at Kim's recommendations, updating it, moving on to the next thing. Lois?
I, I guess for me, the, i- the sign code, uh, my understanding, I guess, looking at the minutes, it was, there was a legal matter of. Um, whether, you know, there were some legalities in order to protect the city. Um, so for me, I'm just having a hard time as to getting my bearings as to, uh, you know, whether the need for the. You know, I, I guess I'm not sure what the need is besides the legal jeopardy. It has, I think, uh, you know, Commissioner Saunders has mentioned some. Some noise about the, the business owners not having enough signage, uh, capabilities, um. I don't know if, if Commissioner Saunders can elaborate on, on the background of where that was coming from. I think during your work on the. Uh, Town Center perhaps. Um, but I, I, I guess as a, you know, from my perspective, it's hard to get any, uh, bearings as to. Or, uh, an assessment for how, um, significant the signage code is. Besides the legal aspect of it at this point. If we are going to, um, you know, cr- include this in our work plan. Uh, it seemed, it's, it seems to me we should, uh, be working on things that, um. Are of priority to, like, we don't have a lot of time. Uh, and I know after coming off the ADU, we sure did spend a lot of time, but that one made sense to me because it was. It, it married very nicely with the, the comprehensive plan, for example. Um. In terms of the signage, uh, code, if it's only a, a, a matter of legal, uh, you know. Uh, consistency and protection, I, it seems, I don't think it makes sense to spend a lot of time on it for the work plan. But if there is, um, truly, you know, if there's, cause I'm not aware of it. I don't know if there is a need in terms of. Should we revisit it because of the, the businesses, for example, then that to me would indicate that, yes, it would seem like we should work on it. And likewise, if there is an issue with the home occupation signage coming up, uh, in order to protect residents, I think also it would be, uh. You know, relevant for the group to look at. I hope that clarifies it better.
So.
Thanks.
Maddie, I guess part of the reason I favor diving into the sign. Uh, code in much more details because if all we're doing is a legal review with recommendations from. S- you know, city council, um. I, I, I don't know, like, I'm just gonna abstain from votes, cause I, I don't like have any particular opinion. You know, on that one way or another. So I guess I just kinda look at it and say, what is it that we as the Planning Commission? Are doing other than providing a rubber stamp, I guess.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And there are some housekeeping things like, um, you know, Steve mentioned there were some minor moves. That can help us close some loopholes, but, uh. Doing those things, not just a rubber stamp, but doing those things versus diving into Town Center signage and home occupation and. And doing a thorough review of those and understanding what's broken, you know, or not working and needs to work better. Uh, that just, that requires a different, um, approach than, uh, looking at closing loopholes and clean, and doing some housekeeping. Which includes, uh, Kim's work, but, um, you know, doesn't only include her work. And I would challenge, there will never be a time you don't have an opinion. So.
That's probably true. I do have a. That's probably true. I do have a pretty strong opinion of the sign code after trying to read it ahead of this meeting. But I find it nearly unintelligible with, uh, the way it's written. So I wouldn't mind just making it clear.
Yeah. So there's a difference. I, I mean, unless you disagree, Steve, I think there's a difference with us doing some housekeeping in it versus looking at strategic changes to the town center signage code and home occupation signage. I, I, I just think that requires more work because we'd have to understand the problem before we could reasonably make recommendations for changes. So, um, again, are, uh, does this group based on like what Lois said also, you know, given our other priorities and interests, do you want to spend the next two to four months going through the signage code, getting the background information? It's not the only thing we would do during that time, but do we need to work that in, uh, over the next several meetings? Or do we, you know, want to focus strictly on, on housekeeping?
So.
David, yeah.
This is just a clarification question. So it, it, man, is it your intention to, uh, come to a decision on which direction we're going to take this evening? Are you looking for a vote?
Uh, eventually, I mean, if, if, if we're not, if we don't all say, yes, we should just spend the next couple of meetings doing the housekeeping and bringing it, the legal compliance and move on. I'm looking for either kind of for us to agree on that or for us to agree, no, let's, let's chart a path for actually going back in and reviewing, um, some other sections and looking for some strategic changes based on community need.
Okay.
Which is TBD because I don't know, I haven't seen any letters or I don't know of anybody asking for changes.
And, and that would be my question as well. It's like, where's the evidence that we would need to take the, the more thorough approach? You know, I, I, I know that in the past, in Richard, perhaps you could speak to this more, but I know in the past, and this is many, many years ago, that there was conversations coming from the community, coming from the business, uh, the businesses at the town center requesting that we, uh, that, that the city reexamines its, its sign policy. But I haven't, I mean, I personally have not heard anything for, for several years, but Richard, perhaps you can share what you've heard recently?
Yeah, it is, it is, uh, for as long as I've been on the commission, that the issue of, uh, signage for the internal businesses at town center has, has been talked about. I have no data on, you know, the number, we certainly have had over the years, had businesses come in and make statements about, you know, the sign, uh, code. So, and, and, you know, I think we have, I don't think it's that complicated because I think we have something now that is, uh, you know, that, the, the interim code or policy, whatever. So that's the one thing that I know of, that I've heard, just anecdotally have heard a lot, just being on, on the commission.
Chair Larson could add some of that.
Yes, and then council member Bodie's had her hand up too. Yep.
We do have, uh, something that we've been using as this interim, uh, regulation as, uh, Commissioner Saunders says, so that's a pretty surgical change to, to make that, um, that, that addition. And then the, um, you know, the, the cleanup is, is, it is clearly, it's, it's exactly what Commissioner Fudge was talking about. There are some sections of the code that are just Byzantine and, uh, I've never had an experience where planning commission didn't, you know, take a hard look at something and say, this could be worded a lot better. So that, that really is the intent of having you focus on it, uh, not for a long time. One thing you could do if you wanted to would be just, uh, before the next meeting, we could notify town center and people we have home occupa, or, you know, who have business license that the planning commissions, we're talking about the sign code. Do you have anything you want them to consider? Because that's what a sign code does. It affects business owners. Most of us don't, don't need signs that, but, but, you know, people who own businesses, you know, they're, they're, they're very important to them. So those are, that community could be reached out to pretty easily prior to the next meeting. Just to let, uh, folks know that we're, that you're, um, talking about it.
Uh, yeah, I mean, Steve, if that's something that you're able to do and could, you know, bring back, um, community input, you know, to our next meeting, I think that would be really useful.
Well, what I'm saying is that we would let them know that they should come to the meeting and co-comment.
Oh, I see. Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
They could submit written comments, you know, you just, you just put it out there. So you'll, you'll just get them, whatever they comes through. I'm happy to forward that to you.
Okay, super. So our action at our next meeting will be to look at what, what attorney Pratt has put together and hopefully we'll hear from the community on these other areas. I would encourage each of us to, to go back to our sign code, revisit it and consider, you know, where these, uh, problematic sections are that, um, Commissioner Fudge is, is talking about and, and then particularly look at the town center code, both the current code as well as the interim code that's in right now. I think it was called emergency code when, um, the mayor brought that forward and, and just consider that for a minute, uh, compared to, uh, some of the other, um, communities that Steve sent, sent us what, last month, um, for consideration. So, okay, uh, council member Bodie.
I'll be very, uh, brief. Uh, I was going to cover some of the same points that Steve did. Uh, I do think that the emergency, uh, ordinance changes that allowed outside signs is, is, uh, pretty quick and easy. I do think that at least with the previous council, there was strong support for allowing the indoor businesses to be able to post signs outdoors as long as the property owner would allow that. I think there was a lot more concern, um, a long time ago, uh, when the sign ordinance was first put in place about the size and magnitude of signs. And I think that, so especially with the pandemic, a lot of the councils focus has shifted to making sure that we can support our small businesses and keep them in our community. So I like Steve's idea of, uh, reaching out and seeing if people want to come and comment on the sign ordinance. If not very many people show up, I think that just shows that there's not that much, uh, concern about signage, but, uh, uh, anyway, I do think there is council support for signage improvements that would help the visibility of our small businesses. And just wanted to share that.
Great. Well, thank you for that. One of the things that I've been curious about and, and I do need to go look back at the code is, how much of that is a tenant landowner issue and how much of it is a code issue? You know, it, uh, is the property owner able to do more with signage? And isn't on behalf of its tenants or are there restrictions that it's keeping the property owner from putting signage up that supports their tenants?
We, we, my understanding is we did have restrictions on signage that, uh, came into play. But we can, our, our new, if we have new requirements, they're permissive and they don't, uh, allow a tenant to do something that's different from what's in the terms of their lease. Right? So, um, it's, uh, uh, basically, uh, we, we did have restrictions. We've, uh, like lessen them on a, on an emergency basis. I think there's support for lessening them on a, on a longer term basis, but overall, even if we do that, it depends on what's in the, the lease or the property agreement.
Great. Okay. Any other questions about where we're at with the signage code update or, um, question, comments that you want to make before we move on? Okay, so we're all going to do a little homework before our next meeting and, uh, we'll come to the next meeting. Being able to receive, uh, Attorney Pratt's, um, input on, on the portions that she's working on.
As well as potential people from.
As well as potential, yes. And Steve, you're going to attend to that, right? For the town center and for home occupations. Okay. Okay, thank you. Alright, let's move on to, uh, the adoption of a 2022 commission work plan. Let me pull that up. Did you guys all receive that draft? Have a chance to consider it. I would love to have a little discussion about it before we simply, you know, move it into a, a vote to make sure it reflects our discussion and, any thoughts that you've had since our last meeting about this?
Could I say a few remarks, uh, Chair?
Absolutely.
Yeah, the, um, the idea here was to, um, to send this to you as a discussion, uh, piece. And that's why I've put lots of question marks in it. You know, I think you, you should think of it though, as a communication with the city council about what you're intending, uh, to work on. And, uh, that, you know, uh, and you, you know, depending on what you end up, uh, putting agreeing to, where you may, you may solicit some feedback from the council about, you know, yeah, we really appreciate you working on this or, you know, maybe you should spend more time on some, on, on this. So, so that's just, you know, be thinking about that. That's, that's your, that, that's, that's what created this, um, this ritual is the council wanting to know what the commissions are working on. It's also in some cases to, to, to budget for them. So right now, the timing is really just to ensure that, uh, uh, planning commission and council are generally on the same page. So the, uh, the items in there are, as I said, I tried to use this to, to help, um, facilitate a discussion about, uh, the approach that we're going to take on each one of these items and also reflect the fact that, you know, there was discussion about, let's, let's focus on a few things, uh, and do those well and not try to, uh, I think there was, uh, some sentiment that, uh, the last was a little bit overly ambitious, uh, in terms of the number of topics. And of course we never didn't get to, uh, many of them. So, um, so, yeah, so I, I think that, um, you know, you kind of covered what we talked about with, um, the, uh, uh, sign code and uh, seems like there's support for the four, uh, bullet items in there. And so I just wanted to give you a little bit of background on the comp plan discussion. Uh, because it's, um, in, in some ways, it's, you know, it's all about, you know, what's, what's missing, uh, based on new priorities. Comp plan was adopted in, uh, early 2016. We call it the 2015 plan because that's when it was supposed to be adopted by. But so what's changed between, you know, over the last, um, you know, six and a half years? And so what the, the, the bullets I put under there reflect what, um, I'm thinking the changes are and they're just submitted for your, uh, consideration. And but ultimately, so, you know, we've got four or five items, you know, housing, clearly we've been talking about the missing middle, maybe doing a housing study. Uh, we don't have to get to that level of detail, whether, whether there's a specific study. At, at this point, what we do need to do is to, to see, you know, what, what is the range of, of that? That, that issue and then understand sort of, you know, um, what, maybe this creates a dialogue with the council about what, what the council wants the planning commission to address as far as housing. In the cop plan update, same thing with, uh, climate change, um, you're going to have a climate action committee. There'll probably be some recommendations from, from them that I would, um, imagine would be, uh, they, they would, that there would be a discussion about how, how the cop plan should change, um, before, uh, to, to address their work. Equity, the planning commissions talked about equity and, uh, all of its decisions. And so is there, um, a policy area where you think the comp plan is, is deficient? And all of these things are, is the current comp plan deficient in any one of these areas based on, um, the, the current policy direction of the city? Um, and we always do, um, a gap analysis for, um, GMA consistency. This is probably something our city attorneys, um, group would do. Uh, just to say, you know, here are the things that have changed in GMA since the last time we adopted the comp plan. And, uh, you know, uh, with the, it would be good to have an initial discussion about public engagement, how you want to do it. I can explain how it was done last time. We could talk about that in some detail. Um, but ultimately what, uh, we, what I really would like to see the planning commission, um, do is, is put together sort of a general scope of work, uh, that you think addresses the priorities for the comprehensive plan update. After you, you've had, you know, you've gotten some information, you've had a light discussion about all these issues, other issues that you identified that I, that aren't in this, uh, initial list. And, and then sort of, uh, you know, kind of weight those things. So later this year, we're, we're coming up with a, uh, a scope of work. It's a, it's a very general document that tells the council. You know, here's what we think, here's what you, the commission thinks should be worked on. Uh, and then that document ideally is adopted by, uh, the council. Just are accepted by the council and it kind of kicks off the official process where we start working on, on, uh, request proposals from consultants and, and those areas that, that we don't have the internal expertise to work on. So, um, so that's what, uh, number two is, number three, uh, the discussion seemed to be really, uh, centered around on the shoreline master program about dredging policies. We could take, um, part of a meeting to discuss what's in the, the dredging policies. And you, as a commission, I was thinking could make a, um, a recommendation to the council as they, they get their review of the SMP and say, you know, we think, you know, based on some understanding that, that here's a particular portion of the code that, you know, you might want to take another look at because we do know that the, the community club has had a lot of, um, trouble in terms of managing their, their dredging there. And so there, there may be some limitations on what can be done, but it certainly doesn't help hurt to take a look at that. So I was, um, and something else, he might just came up, could be another kind of specific, you know, look at some specific, uh, issue like, like, like the reasonable use exception. You could take a meeting to, to, to look at what the code says and maybe hear from City Attorney Pratt about kind of what the, um, you know, the, the side, the side, uh, I forgot the term that accounts for voter use, but basically the, the bumpers, you know, what, but we need to stay with, stay in our lane, basically to keep the city out of trouble. So you could add that as an issue here. So anyway, that's, uh, uh, what I wanted to say before you got too deep in the discussion. So, um, back to you. Chair Larson. You're, you're still muted.
Sorry. Thank you. That's really helpful. Um, could you, uh, we've, like you said, we've talked about, uh, signs and and I thought you gave a good summary of the Shirley master program, but on this preparation for the 2024 comp plan, could you help us understand how these gap analysis would, analyses would take place within our group? What sort of process would we use to approach each of those?
Um, well, I would, uh, on each issue, I would, uh, give you a, a kind of a summary of here's, you're the kinds of policies that are already in the comprehensive plan. And, uh, here's some, you know, general thought about the types of things, either other jurisdictions are doing, uh, or what we know that, uh, at the, when we get to that discussion, what we know about city, city, uh, council and maybe other special committees like this climate action committee, what they're saying about it. And so we'd have a discussion about, you know, you know, you can kind of see, well, this, this really looks dated because of, you know, it, it doesn't address sort of these new terms like missing middle. Uh, and so we're, I think that's the easiest one for you to understand kind of how that discussion might go because you've already had a, a very detailed discussion about housing policy. So there's nothing in the cop plan that talks about missing middle. There's, you know, there's some mention of accessory dwelling units. So you're, you're just going through and looking at all the related policies and essentially kind of doing that gap analysis yourself based on, based on the information where we'll present at, at the time and have an enlightened discussion about, you know, this needs to be a central focus. We do, you know, you justify why we would need, um, some sort of housing, uh, inventory study to, to really understand what we have out there. You know, that, that's, what you're trying to do is say, here's the work that needs to be done. This is like, um, in comparison to like the, um, the environmental impact statement process, you start out with a scoping discussion. What do we need to cover? You asked, uh, you know, for, are, are we covering, we, we plan to look at these things. Is that enough? So, um, you know, so, so in, in, in looking at each one of these areas or whatever other areas you identify, you're just, uh, saying, here's what the comp plan says. And, you know, we think that, uh, there's, there's additional work to be done here. And so I think, you know, that if you, uh, went back and looked at all the policies related to housing, you would quickly identify things that, that the commission has talked about that aren't, um, portrayed there. Uh, and, and so, uh, that's, that's the kind of process you would go through in each of these elements. I think you could cover, you know, um, one or two, a meeting and then come to a, uh, the, uh, decision about the, the areas of priority after three or four meetings at the most.
Okay. Richard. Yeah, Richard.
Thanks, Maddie.
Thanks, Matty. Just while Steve was going through that, it occurred to me another, uh, and maybe this was assumed in what Steve was saying. But another, uh, way to do the gap analysis would be to look at the legislation and the policies that have been developed. You know, since the last con plan and kind of get what they were trying to solve. Like, you know, the ADU thing we just did and use that as a, a filter. You know, on that, on the relevant sections of the plan. So you could determine what, 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 what did this do new or what did it try and fix? And is there something in the con plan we need to update to make it modern?
Right, that, um, that, the, the bullet, the bullet that says, um, GMA consistency could play into any one of those areas, but especially might play into housing. Uh, that while you're discussing, you know, is, uh, are, are areas addressed that the city wants to, to, um, address? You know, what, what's new in state legislation that, that needs to be addressed as well in the con plan?
Anybody else want to comment? David?
I, I, oh, I just lost it. So I just want to say that I, I really appreciate the, the thinking that's going into number two. Um, number one, uh, you know, obviously we just talked about signage. I, I think I need more information before we determine how much time we're going to commit to that. And we'll be, uh, you know, addressing that at the next, uh, the next meeting. But number two, um, I like where, where, uh, Steve is going with this in, in that, um, you know, the overall objective, I think from a strategic planning perspective. The over, or overall objective is to recommend a scope of work to the council. But each of the above items, so really how I see this is, is being, um, written is that recommend scope of work to council is the, uh, the objective and then each of the, the gap analysis is our way of getting to the, uh, the, the, being able to make that, that, those recommendations to the, to the council. So for me, I, I like where we're, we're going with this and I do think that probably it's going to take a considerable amount of time. Um, and I also like the, the comment that, that was made about, uh, uh, being selective about what we're working on rather than taking on too much. This allows us to, to really, um, you know, do, do work well, do the research that we need to do and make appropriate recommendations. Uh, number three, I, 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 I'm not clear about what the objective would be, but I, I can understand why, why, um, as Steve, you're making that recommendation.
Anybody else? Thanks, David. That's, that's good feedback. Richard?
One more quick one, Matty, thanks. Oh, just thinking about the, um, the, uh, the, uh, was the restricted use, uh, or the exceptional use?
Reasonable use.
Reasonable use, thank you. You know, that could play well into a complan topic. Um, so adding that, I don't, I don't think takes you off track.
I, I was thinking the same thing, Richard. I think that's a really good point. Okay, Steve wanted, oh, uh, let's see, Lois, go ahead.
Um, just was thinking too, like if, depending on the, um, the, the objectives for the signage, uh, stuff. Uh, if, if we really wanted to promote other businesses at the town center, that to me seems like it would also be in line with kind of the growth, uh, the, the cop plan stuff as well, kind of promoting that, uh, you know, more, a more vibrant, um, uh, business, uh, town center. Uh, but if it's not that big of a deal, then, then I feel like we're going to spend a lot of time. I mean, that's a big, big endeavor, the, the item number two. And so I, I, I'm, my feeling is that it'll probably take a little more than 50%. So, uh, those are just my thoughts. Yeah, I, I think town center can also be rolled into, or the, the signage could potentially be rolled into the comp plan review as well. Uh, and, or not, uh, again, if, uh, you know, if, if a lot of interest isn't generated in, in the town center aspect of it. From the businesses, so. Thoughts?
I hear you saying basically reapproach if we don't get a lot of community input at our next meeting on this, that we might, do the housekeeping and then look at signage again, but from the lens of our comp plan. Um, when we move into that body of work, is that, is that what you're saying, Lois?
Yeah, and, yeah, I, I, exactly. If there's a lot of people, uh, if there's a big response from the town center. It seems to me to roll, roll the signage also as part of the comp plan, uh, partial, uh, review as well. Uh, because I think the signage, uh, could become a vehicle to kind of promote more robust. Uh, you know, uh, just a more vibrant town center, which would be in line with the comp plan mandate. Yeah, uh, but if there isn't a lot of interest, then we could, you know, just literally feasibly, you know, spend, uh, till March to do the, the signage and then, um, you know, really dig into the comp plan, uh, update. Yeah.
Great. I, I, I take your point and, um, and want to just mention for everybody's sake too. Um, we don't have to only work on one thing at a meeting, so we could touch signage and, and, you know, something else. Uh, in February and in March and, and, and advance a few, you know, um, initiatives at the same time. Uh, Melissa?
Yes, I had sort of, um, as I was looking at the, 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 uh, after this, I was thinking that number two, even just like the gap analysis regarding like missing middle policy, might actually take a while, um, like number two in general, just, you know, given our experience with the ADU policy. And how long for us to get through that? And I know it was a different issue, but, um, you know, that number two alone seems like that could very easily be an entire year worth of work.
I agree, and that's, I don't want to belabor any point, but for us to truly do the work, I mean, sort of reviving TJ's bit with the rubber stamp. That I also don't want to spend, you know, 30 minutes talking about something and feel like, okay, we, we finished that and let's move on. I think to have a serious conversation and consideration over these topics is, it is time consuming. And so I, I'm mindful of that as well. Um, Lois, is your hand still up from before? Did you have something else you wanted to say? Okay. Any other, um, thoughts? Steve, it sounds like at the beginning, what you said, uh, is that before, are you suggesting that before we finalize this scope of work, that we share it with council and give them until our next meeting? To provide either through council member Bodhi or, you know, through deputy mayor Cass over, uh, an opportunity to weigh in or what, uh, can you help elaborate a little bit on the process that you were trying to articulate?
Yeah, sure. Um, um, I'm, I was, um, you know, there's nothing really, you know, binding about this document. It's just, uh,
Right.
You know, you take your best shot at it and see if it, if it doesn't generate any feedback, then it looks like you're on target. So, um, I, I would imagine that's like what would happen if you don't, um, sort of, uh, weight things other than the cop plan too heavily. Uh, so I, I would say if, if there's not any additional items you want to add to this. I just, I, I put in reasonable use exception. As the, um, as a, a fourth, look, you've done the same thing. Um, and, and so, um, so, yeah, that's what I was going to do. I was going to throw some pretenses out there. So you're way ahead of me, Chair Larson.
I'm just wondering if, uh, for the rest of the group, if, if this generally reflects our conversation. And if it does, it sounds like maybe a next step would be to send this to deputy mayor. I could send this to deputy mayor Cass over with a note saying, this is what we're, you know, uh, it may be a little ambitious. But, um, but these are the areas we are, um, you know, intending to, uh, work on this year. Um, and we'd certainly welcome any input or, um, you know, thoughts that council has about this body of work. Is that? Is, does this reflect something that we would want to share with council and, provide an opportunity for their feedback or do we want to edit this further before we would share that with them? Uh, David and then Richard.
But I, I, I think it's, uh, ready to be sent over to city council to, or to our council members to, as a draft to, to request their feedback if they have any.
Okay, Richard?
Yeah, I agree. The only, I, I really like the change of the percentage. And we might even want to lower even more the, the three and four, because that's a little over a meeting apiece. If you have 12 meetings a year. But, but that's a minor thing, really.
Right. And I was kind of thinking this last one too, it, it, it sort of fits up in here too. I mean, the fact that they're split up, it simply acknowledges that for two meetings now we've been asked to, to make space for this, but it kind of does fit overall with the comprehensive plan as well. So, um, I did add, until we can hear back from the community, I did add a verb here. That we would maybe simply evaluate this, but not necessarily commit here to making any recommendations. But instead, um, you know, this is actionable, remove or replace provisions. Um, but this is an evaluation, evaluation, and then this is an action cleanup. Uh, if you guys are comfortable with that, I wanted to point out that edit. Okay. Well, if there's no other discussion on this, then I will send this as a, um, just as a note, uh, to deputy mayor Cass over. Uh, and I'll copy you, uh, council member Bodhi and, um, um, director Bennett, and, uh, and we'll see if they have anything that they want. Want to, um, comment on?
That sounds great. Thank you very much.
You're so welcome. All right, uh, moving along, I thought this meeting was going to be shorter, but it's, uh, I'm, I'm, I was wrong. We had a lot to say about these items. Um, all right, so new business, any, any new business to? Bring up, Steve?
No, business.
I always think it's funny, we, we, we almost never have anything under that, but we, we go through it anyway. Okay, how about reports and announcements? Steve, you were going to take this item.
Yeah, I wanted to, um, just acknowledge, um, where, um, commissioners were at in their, their terms. You know, the people come into their terms, uh, midterm, uh, and so you'll, you know, in, in some cases, you may be serving a year or two, uh, of, of previous term. So, uh, there's a need to, uh, let the mayor know if you, if you want to, uh, continue on for another three-year term. So, uh, right now, um, we know that, uh, next meeting will be Commissioner Saunders' last meeting. He's, I can't even count how many terms we've managed to keep you on the commission. Through being off of the commission for a while and back on, but you, it's been, uh, uh, great to have you, um, as long as we have, Richard. But so Commissioner, um, Cranmer and Commissioner Fudge. No, I'm sorry, Commissioner Cranmer and Commissioner, um, Colino, uh, both, um, need to let the mayor know, uh, if you want to continue on for another three-year term. So that's as simple as just a, an email to the mayor, CCM and Chair Larson. Uh, and, um, I think, uh, my understanding is the council actually has to confirm that. Uh, that if the, the mayor, uh, wants you, wants you to continue on, which I have no reason that you wouldn't. Then, uh, that decision is, is sort of like a consent agenda item for the council. Kind of a, um, uh, just a, a formality though. So, uh, let me know if you have any questions about that, Melissa and David. Uh, and, um, otherwise just, uh, send us an email, one way or the other.
Steve, can I ask a clarifying question for that? Uh, they, so they haven't been on for three years yet. And so is this, are you saying that what they've served so far was the tail end of another term?
Correct. Yeah, they, they came in on somebody else's term. Uh, like, I'm not sure where, um, Steve Morris was at, but it probably was midterm. And so whoever replaces him, uh, will, uh, probably be serving a partial term.
I see. And then, um, you also mentioned, um, uh, that Richard has graciously served multiple terms. I, I seem to recall that, um, we are only allowed to serve two consecutive terms. Is that right?
That's right. He was off the commission for, um, a period, uh, and so he was able to, to come in again and serve, uh, two terms.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to bring that up if it influences Melissa and David. Like, uh, we wouldn't ask you, you know, there, there's an end, there's a sunset date to the number of times you would be asked to, stay on without a break, I believe, correct?
Well, there's, yeah, there's, there's no contract here, so, you know, if it's not working out, just let it know. But we, we would appreciate both of you serving for a, a three-year term, if you can.
Yeah. I think it just helps to know, like, uh, Richard is, is last meeting is next month. And then I think, uh, I think TJ and Ira are a year from now, is that right? Cause they're in their second terms right now.
Right, so we go to the same conversation early next year, uh, for, or Ira and TJ. So, um, the other thing, I, I, councilor Bodie covered, uh, what the status, uh, for, um, Walter and Gem, uh, so they, they'll be, um, coming to the, the, the work session Thursday night to, uh, answer any questions council members have, uh, and then they're set for confirmation by the council during the regular meeting. So, uh, if you have any questions about that, happy to try to address them. And so, um, the other issue, of course, is just, uh, recruitment for the open position. So, um, you know, I don't, um, you know, there's been lots of, um, different ways, uh, different mayors have looked at the commission. Some mayors have wanted to see, uh, a geographical representation through, uh, the city that, you know, not too many people from this neighborhood or that neighborhood. Uh, I think so, that, that, that always plays into it. Uh, there's other times have been if it's emphasis on having, you know, um, you know, a, a balance of male and female members. Um, and so, um, you know, there, there's other, you know, uh, there's other ways to look at it. Uh, in terms of like long-term residents, short-term residents, um, representation from minority groups. Uh, you know, the, it's, uh, something that, uh, you know, if, if commissioners feel like, there's a message you want to send, uh, the, uh, the mayor, I'm sure he would be interested in, um, you know, in that in terms of looking to how, how to fill this position. So, um, but we, you know, I, I think we, um, you know, need to recruit again just to, uh, get a good, uh, group of people to consider, cause, um, you know, uh, Jim and Walter represent sort of, it's always good to have a number of people who are just, they're, they're, they're familiar with the field, you know, they, they come in with a perspective, you know, um, sort of like, you know, Ira does, uh, he's, he's familiar with, uh, lots of aspects of land use. And, and so, you know, we, we want that representative, but we also want other aspects of bringing in people who are, you know, are just, you don't have to have an expertise, but, uh, it's, it's great if you have a position and, and you want to, uh, make sure that's heard. That maybe not be represented otherwise. So those are things to consider when you're thinking about, uh, what your hope, how you're hoping the mayor will fill this position. That's all I have, Chair.
Uh, also, we skipped past, um, at our next meeting, is that right? Steve will elect, uh, chair and vice chair. Since Rachel left, we don't have a vice chair either, so. Um, and, and we also were off schedule from Joel, uh, anyway, uh, for when, when we re-elect a, a chair, you know, elect a chair and a vice chair. And so I just wanted you to be thinking about, um, about that, uh, for, for our next meeting. Um, that we'll need a, a fearless leader and co-pilot, um, so think about whether that's you. I'm looking to all of you.
And sometimes it's a good idea, if you're thinking about nominating somebody, you might ask them before you get to the meeting.
Yeah, it's a very good idea. So just something to forecast for, for our next meeting. Okay, um, that takes us to the end of, uh, our business, uh, before I open it up to citizen comments, commissioners. So any, do you have any comments or questions or anything that you, you want to offer up for our meeting before we wind down?
Matty, just a, a heads up, at some point, as, as the new year starts, I think there is an annual report that the, the commission needs to send and send to the council, uh, so, heads up.
Great. Steve, that's something maybe you and I can work on before the next meeting.
Yes, thanks. Yes. Thanks for reminder.
Yeah, thank you, Richard.
You're welcome.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Well, uh, let's move on to additional, uh, citizen comments. Is, is there anybody in attendance that would like to comment before we wrap up our meeting? Okay. Seeing none, um, it sounds like we've got a full agenda next time. And, uh, we'll try to get that out to you, uh, a week before our next meeting. And of course, if you think of anything between now and then, feel free to reach out to me directly. That's all I have. I'd be glad to take a motion.
I motion to, oh.
Nope. Yes, please go.
I motion to adjourn, uh, this meeting.
Second emotion.
Great. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, none. Okay. It was great to see you all this evening. Thanks for all your good thinking and good discussion. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good night.
Safe travels, uh, Maddie and TJ.
Yeah.
Thanks a lot.
And good night, everyone.
Good night. Thank you, Councilmember Bodhi. Okay, bye.